Call this meeting to order. Please call roll. Mr. Quigley, here.
Here.
Ms. Knapp?
Here.
Please rise, we pleasure to lead this. We pleasure to lead this.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off with agenda changes. Trustee Toronto, do you have any changes in the agenda?
Do I need this added or written?
I think after we talk about it, we can clarify exactly what needs to be done. But we are not going to talk about two contracts for Quaid Roll or I'm not.
So remove them. So I have Quaid Roll on the 13th afternoon. I don't need you.
Will you move it?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
Oh, you're moving it?
I'm moving it.
Okay. I apologize, I had a cold, so I moved yesterday, so. Trustee Nath, do you have any changes?
Yes, I was wondering, I've asked several times for EMS going to be placed in the agenda, and I didn't receive an update from you about it, but I'm curious as to why I didn't see it on the agenda first night.
Because as I mentioned in that update, and as you agreed to back in December, that you would allow me in the first quarter to work with county to come up with a solution. And as I mentioned in my email, as an update to all of us, an update to all trustees, that I'm still working on that, working with Mr. Farmer, and I'm actually in discussions with surrounding townships. So, once I had that ready, I will present that.
So we can't, I suggest that we add that to the agenda. You can provide your update to the public, because you did send me an email about it, but I'm just a trustee and not the public. And I think that we should explain to the public why there is a somewhat of a delay. And I, my concern, I wanted it to be in place by the end of the quarter. So we've got less than a month now before that would be put in place.
Well, there's a couple things being discussed. So again, when I get to it, I will, when I have the final document prepared for it, I will provide it.
So we're not going to give an update to the public on that?
The update right now is I'm still working on it. As I mentioned to you.
Right, well, as I mentioned before, I think we're losing a thousand dollars every day. We don't implement that, so I'm looking forward to having.
Well, I mean, those numbers, you know, I think you're pretty loose with those numbers. But, you know, I've talked to several townships, have done it, and we're still in discussions on that, so.
Right, well.
Like I said, we'll get that to an update when I'm ready.
We're hoping to have it done by the end of the first quarter, as promised. Also, the office assistant position, we were going to advertise that and discuss it at this meeting, it was tabled for the last meeting.
Do you want to add it to the agenda?
Yes, certainly.
Good ask.
And I also requested that the procedures for setting meeting agendas was added to the agenda, it was not added to the agenda.
So first off, under 10C, or is it 10D? 10D? Adding... What was the first one we wanted to add? Office assistant? Office assistant? Oh, that'd be an old one, actually. So it'd be 9D. I mean, we already have a procedure in place for the agenda. Are you looking to propose something new?
Well, what is the procedure in place for setting meeting agendas?
As it was presented to you when you came on board, we basically say you provide the information that you want to, put on the agenda, to Marion Ross by noon. This goes for all the employees, I think that was pretty much across the board, to Marion Ross by noon with all this supporting information. And it goes from there, and then it comes to me for approval. Goes to the chair, whoever's the chair for approval.
Right now, why is it that we do it that way?
That's the way it's been done.
All right, well, again, if we're a trustee, we have no rule in place for having a chairperson actually in charge of the agenda. So I think if we're having too many questions about whether things are going on the agenda or not, we should discuss that as a board, and not arbitrarily have a single member deciding what's going to be on the agenda. Because I'm getting a little tired of having, suggesting that I need to put on the agenda and being denied simply because of the chairperson. I mean, we should actually vote at this point, since we have no rule, we have not voted on a rule of order for that. We should all be voting on what's added to the agenda.
There's a procedure in place. There are items that you've requested put on there as well, trustee Toronto, that didn't make it because, one, they didn't have supporting documentation, as we said, needs to be required. You know, it's nice to have the board prepared for it, so there's times where there's no supporting documentation. So, you know, that's one of the areas. And two, there's items on there that, as I mentioned before, EMS billing. That was put into my hands, I'm not ready right now to provide that information, and then when I do, I will get on them.
Well, there's many items I don't get enough information for, but I'm not scared to address or discuss it, knowing that if I need more information, I'll just ask for it to be tabled. So, once again, you have no authority to actually set the meeting agenda or what will be on, because we have no rule in place.
I'm just following, again, I'm following procedures that have been set in place. And Mr. McCarthy, you can chime in on that. But from my, you know, carrying the word on board, that's been always been the practice.
Mr. McCarthy, are there actually rules put in place for this board, trustee?
Ms. Knapp, I think you were here for a while, did you ever see him?
No, no.
I don't think I have either. Practice has, the practice has been, I think, it's fair to say, as Mr. Quigley was describing, it's been the way it's been done over the years. It's the more folk way of Orange Township. In terms of the agenda, obviously the body's full of different ones what it's going to talk about. So I would respectfully suggest that, you know, if there is a desire on the part of any trustee to add something, it should either, A, it's accepted, as many things have been previously, by a consensus, or if necessary, by all, all for just a vote, and, you know, resolve it in that manner, that'd be a suggestion.
If, that's what you'd like to do, trustee Nath, or you're in?
Because I would bear, if you would like to place something on the agenda, I would never dare, even if I was the chairperson, to deny you the opportunity to speak. Of course, I'm never going to have that chance.
I have never denied, have I ever denied you a chance to speak about anything?
Well, you didn't put things on the agenda.
Have I ever denied you a chance to speak?
You've denied me a chance to put things on the agenda.
I have not denied you, I have not denied you a chance to speak.
We need to adopt a rule in place, or go with what Mr. McCarthy is suggesting. So when I, when I requested something.
Would you like to add something to the agenda?
Well, I've added those two items on, but now the public wasn't aware we're going to be discussing it, because it's not on the agenda. We might have gotten more people here that were interested.
The EMS billing, there's nothing substantial there, that I was prepared to provide that information, so I was trying to hold off until I got that information.
What about the office assistant?
Yeah, that was an oversight. But that wasn't, you didn't request that either, that was just an oversight.
Well, no, that was.
Yeah, that was, that was just a simple oversight.
Well, and the procedures for setting meeting agendas also was not placed on there, but we've not discussed that, but, all right, thank you.
Okay, we move on. Is there anything else with that?
No.
Chair?
Yes?
I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
I placed in front of you, I just received today, two liquor permit requests. They're for the same business. The copies on the front of you, they're for two different types of liquor permits. I'm requesting that. Are you right, the president of the board, those would be added tonight?
Under 8D liquor permits?
Is there a consensus to that? I agree with that.
Anything else? Moving on, public comments regarding items not otherwise on the agenda. If anybody in the public that would like to bring something forward to the board that's not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, address. Saying none? Just like to remind everybody that we have a 7:30 PM hearing for Caribbean Jerks, and an 8 o'clock presentation from Doug Muller of Aspen Energy. We'll move on to approval minutes. The first one being the February 19th. Are there any questions or changes?
No.
Motion to approve the February 19, 2013, for their trustee meeting minutes as presented?
Second.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Knapp?
Yes.
Ms. Toronto?
Yes.
Giving motion to approve the February 19, 2013, Zoning Meeting Minutes as presented?
Second.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Toronto?
Yes.
Ms. Knapp?
Yes.
Then there's the February 25th, any changes on that, that one?
No.
A motion to approve the February 25th, 2013, special trustee meeting minutes as presented?
Second.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Knapp?
Yes.
Ms. Toronto?
Yes.
Now move on to the zoning report. Ms. Knapp?
Okay, the zoning report is available on the cable near the front door. And we've gotten a little bit busier in zoning. We have a BZI coming up on March 14th for a variance versus wall sign with W. Alamo height, and for two conditional use permits for monument signs for McCammon Chase. And the zoning commission has a meeting on March 7th to discuss the planned elderly residential amendments to the zoning code. And then we have a pending application for the assisted living facility. And that's all. Okay, next we're going to discuss modifications to the zoning fee schedule. So, Mr. Perrin, like hey, and I've been working on this. The zoning has been, zoning department typically just, obviously does not make as much, doesn't make enough money to actually cover expenses. So the gap hasn't been closing over the years. We were about $20,000 behind last year. So every little bit counts, and Tom and I got together, and we're discussing some modifications to the zoning fees. And we don't need to make a decision at this meeting, but... Tom, did you bring copies of your proposal?
Yes.
I'm sort of on that spreadsheet from, that's also working down. I just have to do a couple texts.
Yeah.
Okay, we're fine. So, Tom, do you want to go over, do you want to review what you're suggesting change, or are you going to?
Just going down the board. All dwelling units, including those in multifamily, have been $250. I suggested raising those to $300. The next couple items on the list have to do with storage buildings and garages, and I was suggesting raising those, you know, the smaller ones from 35 to 50, and 50 to 75, for garages, and the same with storage buildings. There was one suggestion late today. Just simplify things and make them all $75. Then moving on down, converting one family to two-family dwellings, from 250 to 300 also. However, I can't say that I've ever done one of those.
On the one that, Tom, the one that's no charge, the storage buildings under 100 square feet, do you still do paperwork on that?
No.
You don't?
No, we just advise people to keep them within the side yard setbacks, and no closer than five feet to the rear block line.
So you don't issue permanent for that, right?
No.
It's in my dilution, it says that you don't.
County actually did, I think a good suggestion would be to raise that to 150 feet, because county doesn't need to make a, get a building permit if it's less than 150 feet.
Oh, really?
You're right. So we need to pull some decks from 75 to 100, permanent signs, 250 to 300. I didn't put anything down for temporary signs, but looking at a couple of the other townships that might be prudent, we'll raise that one to 125.
Which one is that?
Temporary signs, six months, and then just below that, renew six months. At my discretion, that both those will go to 125.
What do other townships charge for that?
Liberty charges, they do it for 18 months, I think it was 225. I can't remember what Genoa did.
Genoa's 50, Liberty is 225, and Berlin's 200.
We do it every six months, where Liberty does it every 18 months, which I think would be difficult to keep track of.
It would be. And I think the other two townships basically just did it on a curfew of six months.
One place that I think that we actually lose money in, the recent rezoning up on Little Center Road, I won't mention names, but it was less than 10 acres, and we probably had five hearings. And, you know, brought in, you know, like $1,600 or something like that. And I think we should establish a minimum fee for rezonings. My suggestions are either $3,500 or $3,000. And, you know, keep our base fees the same, 600 plus 175 an acre. Which would mean, if we use 3,500 as the minimum fee, that once you hit 17 acres, then you'd be above the 300, or 3,500 threshold. And I think it was 13 acres or less. You know, once we hit 14 acres, then you would hit the 3,000 minimum threshold.
So what was the difference between the 3,500 and the 3,000?
If you, once you get to 17 acres, it starts generating more than $3,500. And if 3,000 were to be the minimum, then it would be 13 acres.
Do you think that that, because I like that suggestion. Do you think, I think we lose a lot of money on smaller rezonings, where they don't pay for themselves. Do you think that this would pay for, because for each?
Well, it would help, you know, like I said, as an example, for the one on Little Center Road, it was just a little, it was, what was it, like 6 or 7 acres at the most? I mean, the fee was meters.
I think Tom's absolutely right on that, that the smaller zonings, we've always lost money.
And this might, we're not going to make any money, but, you know, we've come a heck of a lot closer to breaking even.
Right, because each hearing costs, what, it's probably a thousand dollars?
Well, there's five board members at $75 apiece per night. There's the minute taker, you know, hourly wages. Just McCarthy's fees and.
Advertising. You don't have a court recorder in all of those meetings, do you?
If the BZA would do, but.
Not at some condition. I like that suggestion. Did you base that on, on actual analysis of how much it costs for hearing? Just a few?
I used the Little Center Road one, I guess, the basis for that. That's the one that was most recent, but, you know, anything under 10 acres, if we have two medians, we've used up all the money.
Right, okay, I like that suggestion.
Then going on down the line, special events permits. Instead of $35, you know, that's the 15-day temporary permit where people are allowed to put up signs that are, kind of normally does not allow. Temporary use permit, like the hearing we have tonight, $150, that's, that barely covers anything, you know. You know, the mailings for this, you know, cost, we'd sent out over 100 letters, so right there was half the money.
Which one, the temporary use, did that permit?
Yes.
We suggested 300 on that?
Yes.
How much, how many letters did you send for?
Well, we've only had this one event every year, so. One year they had it twice, but they're the only ones that have ever made use of this. I guess Kroger did once for, had a big competition for grocery baggers.
What's the difference between the special events permit and the temporary use eventual?
Special events permit is a 15-day permit where we allow people, like the Grand Oak Room, where people can put up banners or balloons, stuff they're normally not allowed to do, for 15 days.
Just once when they own their business, right?
Yeah, we sort of help people out and wink at that a little bit. Return checks, I really don't know how much they cost, but everywhere I go, they seem to be $30 instead of $20.
Do we get return check?
Haven't had any for about three or four years, but every once in a while, one pops up.
What is the fee? Around $30? Is it 35? It's 35? I would do 50 on that one.
And then the other thing that we also think about is the administrative review hearings that we've been having. We don't charge any fees for that, and if you look at, Liberty has a fees for, they do zoning a little bit different, but they have some planning commission fees, and they have, you know, when people come back in for their, what I would call administrative reviews here, they have fees for when they come in for plan approval and things like that, so. If you guys want to think about this stuff over the next week, because our next hearing is, our next trustee meeting is a week from tonight, just think about it a little bit, and, you know. Because we spend a lot of time on those administrative reviews.
Now, you say that you don't charge for administrative review, but I'm seeing a $60 fee here.
That's when, those don't involve hearings, those are when you come in and sign off on new buildings.
Okay.
Or when there's a new subdivision plan, if it's more than five lots, it's $600. If it's five or fewer, it's $300, but those are just in-house reviews, they don't involve public hearings. So I guess I should've said trustee hearing, administrative reviews, which involve a trustee hearing versus just in-house reviews.
Yeah, as we talked earlier, one of the things I mentioned is trying to simplify a little bit. You know, Liberty, Berlin did, on these garages, high floors, and storage buildings, where you basically have a flat fee. It doesn't matter by size, but, you know, just essentially just.
I mean, it's the same amount of time, whether it's big or small, so.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I agree with that.
But thank you, Tom, and trustee Nath, for bringing this up. I mean, it's about time, you know, we cut back and the public could have been.
I look back, and the last time, like dwelling unit fees were raised was 2008. We raised the rezoning fees in 2011.
Where did we raise them from before, when we were doing more?
Well, dwelling units were $200. When I started back in 2000, they were $150. The zoning fees previously were $500 plus 150 an acre.
Yeah, I remember that, we were getting a lot of zoning debt.
And they were that fee forever.
Yeah, we were getting a lot of rezoning at the time, and we were concerned about not covering the cost of the board.
And just to add a little bit to the regular zoning report, I think we're probably going to have at least four rezonings come in this year. So the zoning commission's going to be busy. Anything else?
Is it, you just want to look, review this and put some more suggestions together, or?
And also think about an effective date, when you want to make these attractive.
Right.
When?
We could do it as early as like April 1st, if you want.
Well, and Tom had brought it, storage buildings under 100 feet, but he said the county doesn't require a building permit unless it's 150 feet over or lower, so we might consider that change. And then new construction, commercial and industrial, that was, does that seem kind of low?
I noticed that Liberty does 275 plus 15 cents a square foot. Just for example, there's a large building under construction right now in the township, and that was over a 200,000 square foot building, so the zoning fee for just that building was almost $39,000 last year. So, the 200 or the 275 doesn't really make that big of a difference. It's, when you start talking about a building that size, you know,
Square foot.
It's $15,000 per 100,000 square feet. At 15 cents per square foot. When you get a 220,000 building, then your permit fee's up to almost $39,000.
What do you think about raising the per square foot amount, then? Because I was thinking about raising that. If you look at that, Genoa has $300 minimum, and, or $300, and then Liberty's 275, and Berlin's 350. I wonder if.
For smaller buildings, you know, you know, the small, or the larger base fee would sort of kick in a little bit. I don't know. I thought we were kind of getting enough at 15 cents a square foot, you know, when you start getting with the good sized buildings, but, you know.
Yeah, I also want to be cautious of the fact that we want to promote development as well, so.
Oh, yeah, we do want to promote development, but I don't think anyone, you know, a few hundred dollars is going to keep our.
Yeah, I've been sitting on an almost $19,000 check rate. You know, and most people were kind of astonished that our zoning fees were what they.
Too low, you're right.
And they've built in other states, I don't think they've built in Ohio, or they obviously haven't built here, but apparently fees they paid for the exact same building in other jurisdictions were not nearly that high, so.
Because it would be ideal if we could have a zoning actually try to pay for itself, rather than subsidizing it by the tax dollar. I recommend, we can all look at it in between means. I'd recommend that maybe going up to $300 plus maybe 30, I don't know, 20 cents a square foot or whatever, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the fact of trying to get as close as you can, like, the last few years, but also knowing that development's not always going to be at certain levels. It's never going to be the exact size of what it's going to cost for running the project. And also, as properties and developments blend up.
Yeah, we used to be inundated with deck permits, but I think everybody's broke decks, and then until we started getting some new subdivisions where people want to start adding on again.
Well, for several years, we were barely making, maybe a little over half of what we're actually the cost for, so I'm glad to see that we're getting closer to paying for it.
We cut a lot from our budget in the middle of 2011, so that's helped do that for sure.
Thank you, Tom.
So are we going to table that for the next meeting, then?
What?
Or I'm asking if, for a consensus.
Yeah, I'd ask, you know, just think about it over the next week, and, you know, where we decide, we should do it quickly, because.
Do it on next Monday?
I would like to give people at least a couple weeks' notice.
Thank you.
Trustee Nath, are you done?
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Moving on to the public safety report. We only have one item, the chief's on here, but I spoke to him briefly, and essentially what it comes down to is that they still just have to move some funds into some of the accounts to help pay for some of the bills for various line items, like small tools and minor equipment. Phil, did you have any other information on that, or?
No.
Are there any questions?
No.
Giving motion to authorize the following supplemental appropriations from the county, 2191, 220, 314, 2101, an amount of $27,600 to the county accounts. 2191, 220, 353, 3101, $2,000. 2191, 220, 351, 2101, $4,000. 2191, 220, 360, 0000, $4,000. 2191, 220, 323, 1301, $6,000. 2191, 220, 221, 0000, $3,600.
Two one nine one, two two zero, two two one, zero 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 zero, thirty-six hundred dollars. Two one nine one, two two zero, one four one, one nine zero one, three thousand dollars. Two one nine one, two two zero, three one one, zero 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 zero, five thousand dollars, we're told, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second?
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Nanto?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to the fiscal report.
We have a hearing that's up.
Oh, we do, actually, thank you for catching that. Uh, we do have a hearing regarding seven thirty for Caribbean Jerks. If the applicant wants to come forward, state your name and your address, and present. If you both can speak, if you raise your, raise your right hand.
Any persons that think they may speak during the course of this hearing, please raise your hand to the solemn and sacred word firm. The testimony you'll give in this matter will be truth, all due to no exception.
I do.
I do.
I'm Julie Osborne, I'm the co-owner of Caribbean Jerks. I live at three fifteen West Hall Drive, Delaware, Ohio, four three zero one five, and with me today.
I'm Deputy Susiana Leonard, I'm with Get Behind the Badge, I'm the liaison director for Delaware County. What she's doing is Caribbean Jerks, two thousand thirteen St. Patty's charity event, it's benefiting our organization. I can tell you a little bit about the organization, I also have pamphlets if you would like, I can pass one out to each one of you. It was founded in two thousand one, when a white hall officer was responding to survey warrant with another white hall officer, and was shot at, he lost his life, and his partner was shot in the eye, losing his eye, and was not able to return the wrong course. There were many tragic events over two thousand one, where we thought that we needed to come together and have a nonprofit organization, which founded us in two thousand and one. Our organization, like I said, is nonprofit, we sponsor families that need assistance with taking care of funerals, any kind of financial burden that they may incur during this tough time. We want to benefit, we want to be there at this St. Patty's charity event. Again, we're not getting paid for anything that we do, we're just putting it out there, what our organization does, and helping the brotherhood of these families that have financial burdens.
I think for us, the big thing that, I guess, moved us towards this organization as well is that they're the only organization nationwide that sponsors things for both police and fire first responders. You know, usually you have either one or the other, but you don't have both, so Ohio's kind of leading the way with pushing this out there, especially central Ohio, because that's where they're mostly based, and putting immediate death benefits out there for the first responders' families. And talking to the president of the company, of the organization, they commit to a five thousand dollar donation to the family within seventy-two hours of the officer or the police or the firemen dying, which is really cool, because that does get that money right in there to help them with those immediate expenses, such as a funeral and things like that that move forward. Talk a little bit about the event, it's slated for Saturday, the sixteenth of March. It started at eleven o'clock in the morning, we plan to be finished before one AM. The permit doesn't allow it to go till one AM if granted. We've heard in the past that there have been some issues with the later part of the evening, so what we tried to do to change that a little bit up this year is we want to try to end it by midnight. So our last band is scheduled to leave the stage by midnight, which would make sure that we're well done on having a noise issue before one AM. We will have two Delaware County sheriff officers on duty that day to ensure the safety of all attend. Obviously, with partnering with Get Behind the Badge, there's probably going to be a lot of police and firemen also there, so it's kind of a nice way to, you know, have extra hands around. But we will be utilizing the parking spaces that are out in front of Caribbean Jerks in the Oak Creek Shopping Plaza to set up a tent. The tent will be double walled and fireproof to help abate the noise and also ensure safety of all the guests that are in attendance.
And has that ever been done before, double, double tenant, double?
I believe it has, I believe last year it was for sure, I'm not positive about previous years. But I do know that last year it was double walled around the band area to help abate the noise. We will be doing decibel level checks to make sure that we're not, you know, too offensive to the neighborhood, to try to make sure that, you know, we're in compliance there. We've already organized with the landlord to have additional trash dumpsters placed in the lot to help make sure that we have trash pickup. We have volunteers from Get Behind the Badge as well that will be circulating, trying to pick up trash. We've spoken to all the neighboring businesses, they're in full support, they love the fact that we have additional people, you know, coming, it's exposure for their businesses. We have confirmation that the Brew one oh five point seven will be on site doing a live radio broadcast. Channel ten has contacted us, because we've partnered with Get Behind the Badge, they're interested in coming out and doing a live spot on television as well. All these things really help promote Orange Township and businesses that are there, so we're really excited for this. We have addressed some concerns from some of the other businesses, that there weren't many, as many porta potties available in prior years, so we do have six porta potties, plus the facilities that we have in our own establishment. There's two women and two men's rooms that are available, you know, place as well, so that puts us in a total of ten bathrooms available. Try to make it as comfortable as possible for everyone. Obviously, we want to try to keep money in Orange Township, there's St. Patty's is a fugitive to go out to some of the other bars and restaurants that are a little more Irish, so I think, you know, being able to say, you know, come to Caribbean Jerks, which is in our township, you don't have to, you know, drive across town to go do something, keeps money here, as well as, you know, showcasing the businesses that are in the area. Because it's a charity event, I think it gives a lot of great exposure for businesses around us as well, you know, because they say, look, I can come out and support a great cause. You have any questions that we can?
Well, as you pointed out, and I know you're a new owner, so I know that you're welcome to Orange Township.
Thank you.
But there had, you know, in the past, and you sort of mentioned that there had been some complaints, and last year we tried to mitigate that, and we asked to rotate the stage in a different position, and I think it actually made it worse. I was trying to remember if this is exactly how it was last year, do you know?
I believe that's the setup from two years ago.
Two years ago.
It did make it worse last year?
It, my understanding it did.
I got some complaints, I didn't know if it was worse.
Complaints I got were from the Oak Creek subdivision.
Right, I got some from you, but I didn't know if it was worse, or.
We definitely heard more complaints last year, from what I can tell, previously, and a lot of it had to obviously be done with the rotation of the stage.
Well, I also understand that they were playing till one last year with the bands, as I said, we tried to, to kick that back an extra hour, so, you know, try to be done by midnight.
And last year was on a Saturday, and also is it correct?
That's correct.
And what we had asked last year is that there would be a contact person that would actually answer the phone, so that if we were getting complaints, that we could contact you and say, hey, we're getting a lot of calls from residents, can you help us out?
You can call me.
And that would be great.
I'll have myself a number.
We were, unfortunately, last year we weren't getting the phone answered, so if you would do that, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Happy to.
Excuse me, we've tried that three years in a row, can you guys send your one contact somebody?
Sir, hold on a second, please. One, yeah, you have a score, but you do have to state your name and address. Can you give me the opportunity to make sure that they're done with questioning your person? I appreciate that. Anything else we can do right now?
Well, I was just gonna, wait, are you done? All right, now, okay. I just wanted, I also had the concern, I wanted to make sure that if there were problems, that we had a contact person who could do something back. I think last year, I think the police actually came out possibly, and.
I know that, um, last year they did hire police officers, just like we have this year.
Right.
We had gone through the sheriff's department to hire them, so I know that there were officers on site for the event.
Like special events, but I think that I got some complaints, and then, I guess the sheriff's office came there, and I can't exactly remember what happened, but I guess the noise level was a little too high. I guess you probably didn't hear at that point, right?
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
So I just, I wanted to get a commitment from you that you were trying to keep the music as well as possible, out of respect for the neighboring properties, and, because we'd like to, you know, we can continue to do this, as long as it's not offensive to the neighbors.
So anything else we can do right now?
No.
No.
Sir, could you like a board, state your name and address, please?
My name's Tim Hinton, I live on Sedona, at eighty-eight oh five Sedona Drive. Uh, we've complained every last three, four years about the volume of the music, and they've offered cell phones, never works. And I think, Mr. Pigley, I think you personally came to our house and listened to it outside the front of our house, and how you could hear the bass.
That was Mr. Cass.
Mr. Cass.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you could, you could feel the bass in our house, that's the worst part. Yeah, it's loud, and it always seems like, they say they want to turn it down as the evening gets later, like ten, eleven o'clock, it seems like it always goes louder.
And we're, remember, we're on the other end of the hall.
We're clear down behind Ask a Ski.
Oh, yes, ma'am, please state your name.
Anita Hinton, eighty-eight oh five Sedona Drive. And, you know, we called you guys last year, I called Lisa last year, I think she was on her way to vacation, and then she said after she'd come back, she would get in contact with me. We've never heard, I've never heard from her again, so, I mean, it's like we always get swept out of the.
Well, we called the sheriff, the sheriff came out, he said he was going to deal with it, and BJ was doing the police.
Seems like they turned it down for maybe twenty minutes, and then you back up the ghost.
They said they came back down there and got the situation resolved, is what the captain said.
We ended, we ended up having to have a sheriff come to our house, and it was a female sheriff, and she came in the house, she was, oh my God.
She couldn't believe how it was still here in the house.
In the house.
Was it that night?
Oh, that's the night, mhm.
But the police took over the investigation from that, I think we discussed it that night, that the police were gonna handle it.
Yeah.
Because it's a noise, it's a, let's say, noise, they're violating the countywide noise resolution, so there's nothing as a trustee.
But like the sheriff told us, they can go over there, tell them they have to turn it down, if they don't, they fine them, they wait a little while, turn it back up, so they fine them again, so it's only a hundred dollars each time, big deal.
But you just feel like we're always getting.
We're not, you're not hearing us, that's what we feel like. You're not listening to our side, we live in the township. We should have, you know, I mean, just be reasonable, I understand it's a charity, that's great. But it's always so loud, and like you said, they turned the stage around, they turned it around so it faced Powell Road last year. We took a walk later in the evening, when they were, they had their music up, and you could hear it all the way through the neighborhood on the other side, seemed like they turned it up even louder.
I mean, if they're gonna do it that.
And if it's loud that loud for us, and we're behind the stores, what's it like for the people in the apartments across the road?
Right.
Ms. Osborne, do you, um, Hinton, or Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Do you have any way, and we have had this complaint many times, in that they do tend to turn the music up, is there any reason it has to be, and I've been before, it's extremely loud, the music sometimes, is there any way to try to just keep that, that down, are you checking with the, the decibel checker?
Yeah, they have a decibel checker, I can attest to what was done in the past, but I do know that there's always been a decibel level meter there.
Yeah, every time they did it, the decibel meter, the guy even said last year, because I know it's different owners, but he always walked on the other side of Powell Road, never the direction the music was being played towards. He never came down north through our neighborhood.
Yeah, and he never came around and asked us if.
Yeah, he said he went door to door, we never heard from him.
And we're usually home, and you guys should remember, two years ago, he offered us to go stay in a hotel. I was like, I'm not, no, that wasn't last year, the year before.
Don't split down into parts.
No.
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 Not my kind of music. I understand, it's all for charity, and that's all great and fine, but let's keep the volume.
Is there a legal decibel, is that, is that how this works, is there a legal noise level, decibel or something?
I know that there is some level that the police enforce, but I don't, off the top of my head, know what.
It's like, if you can, I can't remember, there's a countywide noise resolution that they have to abide by, so I believe it's if the noise can be heard, um.
Yes, she said that there was.
Off the property, that was why they came, because if, if.
Mike, you remember it's right off, uh, somebody feet off the property or at the property, I don't know.
I gotta say, I'm not familiar with the countywide resolution, I know some of our neighbors have been out at a distance, sorting their.
There is a countywide resolution.
Yeah, like I said, I'm just not familiar.
Including Orange Township.
Yeah, I have not seen that or been where.
It's the same thing as we had, it's, I guess it's superseding our noise resolution.
Well, either way.
Which is why I couldn't enforce it, because it was a sheriff's issue, but what.
The oldest worldly conduct, twenty-nine seventeen thirteen, would cover the situation, and it's back to fifty.
But is it, is it that it, what's our current noise resolution, is it that no noise goes off the property, or is it?
I would have to check that and get back to you, there's been a lot of discussion over the years, and I don't want to stay.
Yeah, I can't quite remember, but it was pretty stringent, and I think it was almost as if they were just on adjacent property, you could hear the music, then they could shut it down.
I worked that evening, I'll be there throughout the whole night, I'll give you my cell phone number, I'll keep an eye, we'll check the decibel levels, I'll keep a close eye on it, and if there is an issue, we'll take care of it immediately, I will be there.
Okay.
Love you, all right?
Yeah.
And Ms. Osborne, being new to this, I mean, I'd like to give her a chance to maybe make good on, on this, and.
Well, we do too, I mean, we've got, you know, I mean.
Yeah, we don't want to cause any trouble, but it, it does get ridiculous sometimes, it's just so loud. And the bass, we feel the bass, I'm sitting in my family room, and I feel the bass through the floor. And you have to realize how much distance there is from where that stage is at to our house.
Now, is the stage gonna go like it was last year, because?
That's what I want to verify, because we saw the bass last year.
The stage last year was towards Powell Road, because we, he said he would move it.
He turned it around, faced the opposite direction.
And how they, how you guys said it was.
They were always facing it down towards the other end of the shopping center.
Down toward Floyd's?
Yeah, down towards Cameron.
But wouldn't it face the shopping center? Does it block, is it, is it a buffer between the neighborhood back there, and?
Because where do you say?
It'd be very inconvenient if you faced it towards the Clarice Parkway, so then you have to walk all the way around the tent, correct? To get it.
The tent, the tent runs the same direction as Clarice Parkway?
Okay.
So you have to put it either at your end, or you have to put it at our end. So I, you know, I can look at it and see which way, I think, but maybe the thought was if you put it at your end, the, the shopping plaza would buffer some of that noise away from the housing complex. Going the other direction, I think you're gonna have a problem with the people across the road, because there's no buildings really there to, you know, to buffer. But we can definitely look at putting the stage whichever.
Is what was last year, or last year?
Okay, thank you.
Last year, which way, the base?
For the Oak Creek subdivision.
The base that one?
Well, that's where the calls I got. It was vibrating through the windows in the, in homes.
Right.
We have a different sound company this year as well, which may alleviate a problem. Because I, I did hear, obviously got this feedback that they're gonna, and so we're going to a different sound company, that maybe would be a little more responsive to our needs to turn the volume down a little.
Have you talked to the sound professional about what the best place for, or to go, and the best orientation?
We have to have a meeting with the sound people later this week, so we can discuss that, so.
Because they might have a better idea than us, who aren't sound professionals, I'd figure out. But do we have to approve the application of the tent, or do we just approve the, the request?
We, I think we did last time, sort of stipulated, had the case of the direction, but. If there are particular stipulations you want to see included, you'll see the draft form has a space for that. I would suggest that anything that you're looking at, and where the tenant be listed at that.
I don't know if we could have, if that would be too vague, a commitment that, that you meet with your sound person and give their professional opinion, I don't, I don't know if that's too vague, but I don't know how it would be.
Would work to state that the tent shall be located as recommended by their sound expert? If you can confirm your statement, maybe.
Actually, you should say the stage within the tent will be located.
Oh, this, you're right, this may, right. And Tom, you can verify that information with the sound person? Has verified that it, uh, is that, is that accepted, right? He would verify that the sound, that the sound professional has, uh.
Well, I, yeah, that, I'll leave that to you and Tom to work out, I know that's a bit illegal.
Well, if everybody thought it was, I mean, they only have two ways they could put a stage in. If everybody thought last year was worse, then we'd need to go back to the old location.
Or if they had some additional measures they could take to reduce it, I'm just saying that Tom could verify the, that someone actually did speak to the sound professional.
No, we just add that at the end of your, your point. The stage within the tent to be located. The stage within the tent to be located is recommended by the sound expert for Caribbean Jerks, zoning inspector to verify prior to the event.
You said stage to be located.
What I've, what I've got is that, that the stage with, within the tent is to be located as recommended by the sound expert for Caribbean Jerks. Uh, this to be verified by the zoning inspector prior to the event.
I was also asked today by Joel Boleson at the fire department to make sure that you guys get a hold of the fire department and the building department, because it's actually the building department who will issue the, I'll give you a secret, I'll give you guys their numbers if you don't have it, I'll give it to you tonight or tomorrow morning, whichever is better.
That'll be great.
He told me that, uh, he indicated they had not been contacted yet.
He said they were aware that the event was gonna happen, but they hadn't gotten any official paperwork yet, okay. And that's been normally the case, they came, they would always come to your fires and.
I mean, Mr. and Mrs. Hen, you realize, I mean, it is gonna be a concert, chances are you're just gonna hear the music.
As usual, that's the reasonable, what happens is the music gets louder and louder. Let's try to keep it at a reasonable rate.
We understand completely, and that's one of the reasons why we're trying to hold it on Saturday as well, because we didn't want it to rain down on Sunday, that people have to go to work Monday morning. You know, so we, we're sympathetic.
They used, the other people who used to have it during the week, whatever day it fell on.
Yeah, but we're sympathetic, we understand.
Just remember, this is your test. They're giving, they're giving you a chance right now, okay?
Okay, well, uh. Christine, I pass over to you.
Um, okay, so the stipulations, um, was the fire issue gonna be the mission or?
The fire, the permits, uh, request is supposed to accompany by approvals, we see that on, uh,
Okay, so.
The code section when it's submitted, now that hasn't happened, so I would strongly suggest that prior to issuance of the permit, that the zoning inspector will be presented with those permits.
I usually meet the fire department and the building guys over, decide when they do their inspection, so.
We would probably do the inspection at ten AM, eleven AM.
When you said, uh, prior to issuance of the permit, zoning inspector will be presented with what?
It would be permission or approvals of the, uh, Orange Township Fire Department and Delaware County Building Department. Uh, again, you could require those to be presented to the, uh, zoning inspector prior to, uh, the event.
And the other, in the stipulation, the fact that it is being held from eleven to one, but the music will be cut off at midnight.
We're, we're scheduling it to end that midnight, it may run a few minutes past, but we definitely wanna be done before that one o'clock deadline.
Well, I mean, generally, we have, we put in a deadline.
Yeah.
So, all music, right?
You'd say this is stage, yeah. Outside.
Uh, the amplifier, have you heard of the amplifier music?
Amplified music, you'd say amplified music, uh, we'll shut off by midnight, if that's what you're looking for.
Can we do it at twelve fifteen in case there's a rule this one?
Wayne's probably, he's the doctor, he's the clerk of the minutes.
Are there any others?
Just ahead of it.
I. I don't know.
Make a motion, the application number thirteen zero zero seven five filed by Caribbean Jerks and Care of Christie Sukaba and Julie Osborne. A zoning permit for a temporary use to be held, um, temporary use to be held at twelve sixty-two East Powell Road, Lewis Center, Ohio four three zero three five, in the Oak Creek One Commercial Development, on Saturday, March sixteenth, from eleven AM to one PM is approved. Did I say?
Eleven AM.
Sorry, eleven AM to one AM by the Orange Township Board of Justice. Further resolved that the board finds the application complying with section twenty-one fourteen of the zoning resolution, and contains all required information and approvals, that the proposed use is an approved temporary use, and that it makes adequate provision for the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, and general wealth, welfare. Further resolved that such approval is given subject to the following stipulations, which shall be made conditions of the zoning permit. The stage within the tent will be located as recommended by the sound professional for Caribbean Jerks, and shall be verified by the zoning inspector prior to the event. The owner will provide a contact number which he will be available at during the entire event. The all amplified music shall be turned off by twelve fifteen AM. And prior to the issuance of this permit, the zoning inspector shall be presented with permission and approval of the Orange Township Fire Department and the Delaware County Building Department.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Ms. Taranto? Mr. Quigley?
Yes. Thank you, uh, we do have another, uh, assuming, uh, looking forward, Mr. Doug Mullett is.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm Mr. Doug Mullett, I'm with Aspen Energy, we are a third-party supply consultant for electricity and natural gas out of Powell, Ohio. We have partnered with AEP Energy, which is a sister company to AEP Utility. They have a, a new program available for cities and townships alike, um, where it's a government aggregation program, offering the residents and small businesses a discount on their electricity, specifically generation and transmission, which is the heftiest portion of, uh, the residents and small businesses bill. The savings, um, is roughly around a hundred and fifty dollars per household annually. A typical resident pays around eight point three cents per kilowatt hour for their electricity. This rate is somewhere in low sixes to high fives. There are three, well, the, uh, the residents and the, uh, small businesses, all the residents and small businesses that are already with a third-party supplier would not be signed up for the program. The other ones would be on an opt-out program where they would have, uh, nine days to opt out of the, uh, the, the program. And, uh, some of the cities that have taken advantage of this, uh, recently, uh, the city of Upper Arlington, Mount Bergen, Upper Sandusky, and Bucyrus. And I'm just here tonight just to gauge interest and see, uh, if it makes sense to come up with more formally.
What are the details of the contractual obligation?
Most of the time, this is voted on, um, and the, uh, the contract then is on an opt-out program where everybody in the, uh, in the township would be enrolled. And then they would have the opportunity to opt out if they didn't wanna be enrolled.
So, this is cheaper than what's out there right now with, uh, these other energy plans, like FirstEnergy or something like that?
Well, those programs are good, um, if you just want to sign up as your single household or a small business. Uniting all the residents and the businesses together can give a much more favorable.
I would imagine a lot of those that have already in a program are locked into contracts.
They are, and this would not affect anybody that's already in the program, they would not be enrolled, it would just be everybody that's not enrolled in the program. And if anybody wanted to get out of the program, uh, out of the program, there would be no penalty to exit to go to another third-party supplier.
You said no penalty?
No.
How much notice do you have to give if you're going to?
No, um, not think of a formal notice, that notice will be given, uh, to the utility and to AEP Energy, when, when that resident or small business would go to change to another third-party supplier.
And if they choose not to opt out, if they just don't pay attention, they're automatically enrolled in this? And this is something that the township would have to implement?
Well, unless you already have, uh, something in order in place that allows you to do that.
And have you, did you say that your company's done this for any other townships in the area?
AEP Energy has, we're working with some other, not some other townships, but the city of Upper Arlington and the city of Bucyrus. It's a new program, um, so a lot of cities and townships are just now recently coming on board. A lot of them won't be able to get on the ballot till November unless they already have knowledge in place.
So, at, at, sometimes, I know the rates go up and down, would, do your rates change, or is it a fixed rate?
It would be a fixed rate.
For so many years?
Mm-hmm.
How many years?
That just depends on what, uh, is agreed upon in accounting, APM.
So, if we agreed to, if a certain rate was set and the rates actually went down, then the customers would continue to pay the, the, the rate that was agreed upon?
Or they could opt out of it? They can, they can always leave to get to another supplier if they found that there was a better rate out there. Those rates can always be renegotiated with the, with the community as well. It's highly unlikely that, uh, the rate with the utility is ever gonna go down below what you can get at the third-party supplier.
Is there any historical data to, to, um, to, uh, stand behind that, do you have any information showing that your company, well, how long has your company been doing this?
Uh, we've been in business for ten years, we've got over fifteen thousand customers.
So, do you have any information that shows that your customers consistently paid less than they would have if they had gone with a different supplier?
Um, all we really have is testimonials from our com, our customers, we currently have, um, most of our customers are small businesses, industrial, uh, schools. And our, this, uh, residential program and small business aggregates is a new, um, part of our business.
But if you can get some more substantial numbers, uh, that we can compare to, um, I'd certainly be open to you emailing those and then reviewing them, and if you have any interest, we'll give you a call.
Okay. And it took, it took a legal documentation as well, every review to see if, if there's anything there that we're able to.
Right, go ahead.
Yeah, we could supply you with, uh, you know, what would go on the ballot, uh, what degree it would look like, um. And the other thing I didn't mention was, um, you know, this is something that needs to be educated to the public once it was something you guys did decide to do. AEP Energy, um, does a lot of that work for, uh, for, they would do a lot of the work for the township by, I mean, press work, marketing, um, work mail, those kinds of things.
And does it have to be on a general election, do you know?
I don't know, it just depends, uh, on your own setup and how you guys wanna accomplish it.
And do you know how long the contract is, how often the township could renegotiate rates?
Like every three months or six months, or is it vary per entity?
It, it varies.
Yeah, I would also be interested in, in some kind of historical data that shows that customers regularly save money compared to.
I mean, like I said, this is a new program, the aggregation program is a new program, but what we can show you is what the average consumer currently pays, and what they would pay on this fixed rate program, and what the discount is, it works out to be about, um, the average users, for residents paying anywhere from eight to nine cents, and this is a rate in the high fives, low sixes. So, it looks out to be, average, average household uses about eight thousand four one hour a year. Savings works out to be around anywhere from a hundred forty to a hundred and seventy-five thou, a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year.
Have you had very many complaints, uh, I've read a few letters to the editor for other areas where people were upset that they had switched or automatically, like, they felt this kind of like, uh, kind of communist, maybe, and were upset, do you have any one that, uh?
This, this program, um, in Ohio was first started up in the First Energy Territory, around Akron, Cleveland, and Toledo. A company called First Energy Solutions, um, put a lot of those, um, government aggregations in place. The problem, number one biggest complaint was, uh, residents and small businesses who were signed up to the program, they decided, who decided not to opt out, were actually charged with fees if they were, well, if they wanted to exit the program and go to another third-party supplier. So, that's kind of AEP Energy's learned from that, that's not something that they don't stand becoming.
So, they've made improvements to the program since it started?
Yeah.
Thank you, we had to provide information.
I'll get it to you. Should we get scales?
Yes.
Thanks.
Moving on to the fiscal officer for, Mr. Spitzer.
The first item is an amendment to resolution thirteen zero eight nine for the blanket certificates. The series of account codes in front of you, for five thousand dollars, is for small tools and wire equipment. The fire chiefs thought that they had that item in there, and they realized they didn't, so this is to amend. The, uh, blanket certificate resolution include that five thousand dollars.
Any questions? Make a motion to amend resolution one three dash zero eight nine to correct the name of blanket certificate for account two one nine one dash two two zero dash four three zero dash two one zero one, to five thousand dollars.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Taranto?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Second item is just a, an amendment to correct the name as it was presented in the previous resolution. And you have the correct name in front of you, same company, there were just some words left out. And we're required to, uh, approve those POs of specificity in terms of who they're going to.
Any questions? Make a motion to amend resolution one three dash zero seven seven to correct name to the Shelley Company for Lisa payment.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Taranto?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes, can I ask, what was the original?
Shelley Company.
Just Shelley Company?
Next item, discussion on credit card acceptance, is a tandem item with, uh, our new website, and for the purpose of having online payment of two passes and zoning fees. And Mr. Quigley forwarded two, two proposals, uh, to the other board members. And the initial proposal from the same company that built our website, Civic Plus, had some fees associated with it that I thought were excessive. So, I went out and asked our bank, we have a depository agreement with the Delaware County Bank, for ease of transition, so that we didn't have to go through the process of, of, um, finding a new depository and going through that agreement, Mr. McCarthy works with Delaware County Bank's attorneys, uh, quite a bit, and they're always very, uh, uh, graceful in changing terminology to fit the township's needs, and, and Mr. McCarthy's concerns, legal concerns. Uh, so what you were forwarded is a proposal from Delaware County Bank, who they have a, uh, preferred agreement with a company called Finnet out of Cleveland, and, well, Boardman, Ohio, and, um, the fees and the percentage charge was incredibly lower, uh, than Civic Plus. And it seemed like their user interface seemed a little bit more user-friendly in terms of from our side, you can go behind the scenes, because it, one thing I liked about it is it takes everything while you're still in the Orange Township website, you don't have to leave that website to a third-party website, and then it automatically erases. And then it automatically erases any data that you put in for security purposes. And you have all the costs in front of you. It's important for us to have action on this tonight because, as we're all aware, pool passes are right around the corner, and this is something I think residents have wanted for a while. It's something that Mr. Quigley has worked very hard on over a number of years to bring to the public. So as we approach this decision tonight, keep in mind that we have to give a 30-day notice on using any of these, a 30-day notice to the merchants or the credit card companies on the fees and whatnot. And then we also have to make users aware of any surcharge that we apply.
I thought the rates were all low and long.
Just to give you an idea of why I shied away from Civic Plus, they wanted a $2 per transaction fee and Finnet Delaware County Bank does not have that charter fee. So it was considerably less. And, you know, as I think about residents using it, $2 is $2, so.
So they just have a percentage, is that correct?
Civic Plus had the $2 and a percentage.
A high percentage.
It can go up to 4%. I think they were at 2.96 maybe?
That looks 3.4.
3.96. So they were just under the maximum.
And then the, the actual resident would pay the fee, right? The dollar can be a fee?
Depending on how you guys set it up, but typically, and Ms. Taranto, through her personal business, could probably explain it a little bit better. But we would have this per-transaction percentage that we would owe to the credit card companies, and I believe Mr. Quigley could speak to it as well with his experience. But if we did have a surcharge, for example, the monthly service and support fee, if we were to pass that to residents, we would have to notify them in front of any surcharge we would have on the card, on per-transaction.
Can that be done where, I know when I purchased a dog license the other day, and I think it was like a $2 on monthly or $1. So this looks like it's more of a percentage. So is there, can the website actually add that percentage like that easily?
Yeah, Finnet, well, I don't think it's a percentage added. It depends on how the board sets it up. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Quigley or Ms. Taranto, but.
I, I've actually, this is a board notice, because I work for a credit card company, I need to stay out of it.
Oh, okay. I'll keep you out of it. But Ms. Taranto, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you're processing a credit card fee, that surcharge, this percentage is taken from the fee, and then you can make up that cost to residents, but you'd have to notify them.
That's what I believe a 30-day notice is.
Yes.
You have to state it on the website that they will be charged a fee. My concern was the pool passes were just paying for the, the running of the pool. So we don't really want to lose money on this, or it's going to dip into what we pay to make the pool run. But I do think there needs to be a surcharge for those who want to use a credit card to pay for their pool passes. Can we set, I see the monthly, the monthly, and thanks for looking into this. This looks like it's a much better deal. I appreciate it than the Civic Plus for sure. So I really appreciate that. Rather than charging a percentage, is it possible to say, okay, for a family of five, it's going to be, you know, a $2 surcharge or a charge, anything like that, to help us, you know, also pay for our monthly service and support fee and these, the training and just things like that? Is it possible for us to set up like a simple surcharge, like a dollar, $2, rather than an actual? But something obviously that we wouldn't be making money on, but that might be?
Mr. McCarthy has read the.
No, well, Mr. McCarthy has. I'm just going to raise that. One thing I'd ask the board, I saw this was on here, and did have a brief discussion with the chair. I have not yet had a chance to review this. I'd ask for that opportunity from the board. But as a general rule, I would say on fees, first of all, we're going to probably find out fairly quickly if there are rules and those are the rules. Secondly, the cost of a fee is to recover only the expense incurred in the transaction by the entity. And for that reason, I would suspect that most likely, and again, we can ask, I have no problem with that. Most likely, we're going to find whether you got five kids or one kid, the, the cost of processing the transaction is probably the same.
Well, the percentage though, percentage of, I guess the percentage of the amount.
Well, it would be a percentage of the amount, but the percentage would be a static percentage. That's.
Oh, right, yeah, the percentage, right. So if we had, like I said, if I paid with other, other government entities that got on, and it's never been a percentage. It's always, like I said, the Delaware County auditor, the dog license was $10, and it was a dollar or two surcharge, might have been a dollar, but.
I really, yeah, I really, I'm sorry, I really want to help you out right here, but, but I can tell you where to look for information.
Oh, that'd be great.
And you guys can look it up.
Wait, so you work for a different bank?
No, I work for, I work for an acquire. It's a subsidiary of US Bank. We're, we're.
Oh, is it? Oh, I didn't know that it was a subsidiary.
And, yeah, and because of that, it's, there's a high chance, and I didn't look into it, but there's a high chance that we actually do the, I don't know. But sticking with Mr. McCarthy, it's better for me to stay out of it.
I just have never seen it. That's smart. I've never seen a percentage. I've never actually seen on a government, maybe on, I think you can pay your IRS tax possibly. That might be a percentage, but I usually, it's usually a dollar or $2. And, oh, at the Worthington Community Center, if you get online and sign up for their programs, you know, it's $2, $3, $1. It's always seems like it's a rounded amount, and that might be easier for the residents. But then also, I want to make sure we're not overcharging them. But they'll have these ancillary expenses like the monthly services support fee, things like that. So I guess if we figured out how much it was going to actually cost, I just would want to make sure that we recover costs like Ms. Taranto said. Because it would be, like, private businesses would kind of eat the cost maybe more because they want to bring business, bring business in. But for a government, obviously, Ms. Taranto, I think agrees, we shouldn't, we should have been paid for the fees of using a credit card. But I don't know how soon we can figure it out. We can highlight what that amount is because we need to get this done. When will we start accepting pool passes, Ms. Matt?
I think the newsletter and all the applications will be pulling out probably next week.
This quote expires on March 13.
But do we have a way to implement this immediately is the problem. I don't, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to go for it. So we can't accept the credit cards for 30 days after accepting this with the surcharge? Correct? We should have this information from the.
From the date, from the date we send the notice out would be 30 days from that date.
Right, and plus we don't know, we don't know what percentage we should be charging, or if we're allowed to charge a flat rate, or we have to charge a, there's a lot of unknowns here, but we do have a meeting on Monday, which is only a week away. Maybe Joel, could you, or someone get their information together and, do you work for Finnet?
No, I don't.
Well, then I think, well, I think that should, that I didn't do.
Well, no, no. No, the problem is though is that I need to find out, if there are any way using us as your acquire, I mean, there's fees that get passed on, and that's what I have to, because I'm missing out. So I haven't had the opportunity to dig into and find out whether or not it does come back to us or not. But I'm just better safe than sorry before.
And we could, we could also put in the newsletter that, to, we're considering, we're trying to get credit cards up and running and kind of check the website. And if we happen to have it, we don't, we don't. I know it kind of leaves it open-ended, but I don't want to not tell people we're going to accept credit cards, but I don't want to tell them for sure we're going to either.
Could we, could we have an approval in place and Mr. McCarthy can?
Absolutely.
Draft the resolution?
We know we're going to do it. We just have to.
Well, I think that the approval is done with the resolution.
Right, and we'll be a part of it. We don't have a resolution then. We'll probably have to wait until next.
All the fees are there in front of you, I think, if we stick to the fee schedule.
But do we have a resolution to approve it or how?
That was my question, is if, is if we allow him to know the time of duration of the meeting or some time that he could draft the resolution.
I think it's going to take more hours than that. But I would give a consensus that it would, I think it's a great idea. But I don't see how. It's, it's pretty technical. And it's the first time he's ever done this. Usually when government tries something new, there are a myriad of things, there end up being some issues. Now, we could put it out table to Monday. Hey, Mike, how long?
Yeah, we still, no, I'll, I'll get ready for Monday.
But how many days do you think approximately, range of days?
Well, I'll be honest, I very want to be able to work with Joel and Delaware County Bank just to run down some of the questions you've had. Beyond that, review the agreement, try to identify the operative law on it, and suggest whatever suggestions, if any, there would be. Again, I think that can move to the head of the line.
Right.
We could shoot for Monday. That would be for the 15th. I think Joel said that's the deadline.
It just says here, quote, expires 30 days from February 13. So I, March 13 would be.
Well, I don't think they're going to turn us down. Yeah, I think they would extend that. And we could also put on the website that we'll start accepting credit cards on a certain date.
Do you have a question?
Speed finished, 3045 Pine Ridge Drive, Willisire. Just one question. How much is this going to cost the township? Not talking about the fee. How much is it going to cost the township to implement this?
Like stack time and?
How much is it going to cost the township to implement this?
We've already built the website. This is just a matter of putting a link on there, so I would say the cost would be minimal.
Minimal?
If somebody, Nancy or Patty, were to add the link, I mean, you're talking an hourly rate of maybe $15. And then Finnet and DCP would, behind the scenes, would be building our, from our link to Finnet and DCP would then be building the skeleton, but that would be on Orange Township.
And customers would enter their own information. They would be in charge of all the data entry. So you get on and purchase the pool pass, you put your own address and name on it.
But I thought Mr. Spitzer mentioned something about the fees upfront to do this when you first brought the item up.
The training. There's 120. That's why I was wanting to make sure we cover that. There's a, there's a gateway fee is $5 per month, and an application setup fee, training is $125, which I assume that's a one-time fee. And then there's a monthly statement fee of $5. I don't know, Joel, reject fee of 15. Yeah, I want to identify the cost. I want to know exactly how much, like the.
You're, you're.
That would basically be covered by the surcharge that is charged to the resident who pays for the, with a credit card online, whether it be $2 or $3 that we charge to cover those fees. So I don't anticipate it costing any of the township anything. Right, but like Mike is going to check, can we, say it's going to be $200 a month to actually run, run the service, that's a minimum. But I don't know if we can legally actually add an extra dollar for the transaction to pay for those, like, operational costs or not. So I, I would want to make sure that we were covering 100% without any, any fee.
Thank you, but kind of sounds to me like the car salesman telling you there's another party coming in to drive that this afternoon. You want to buy it. That's the 13th, that's pressure to me. Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to wait.
Thank you.
And you have access ahead of time.
Point here, 30 days must be given to the resident, but it also must be given to each card brand as well as the acquire Sage Global, Elevon, or Priority. Do you work for any of those, Mr. Quigley?
Which one is it?
Sage Global, Elevon, or Priority?
Well, that just points it out right there. Yeah, I can't say any of it.
Okay. So we also have to give notice, 30 days notice to those card brands as well. And it's no pressure. It's just a matter of bringing it to the residents because it's something that's been asked for for a number of years.
And who's your rep that you spoke with, Joel, about this at the bank? That person can, if we have questions, we can ask them.
Yeah, just to clarify something.
Sure, but as always, I think it's important to have one point of information so that all the information doesn't get consolidated like it has.
Well, right, we don't have any information right now in this meeting, so I would assume you expect each of us trustees to go ahead and take care of that, so.
I just want to clarify something. You're actually just raying off of four different acquirers, so it just depends on which one you use, but still, that is one. That's what I'm going to find out for sure.
So we're a consensus for Mr. McCarthy to look forward and regarding insurance? Okay? And I would want to vote for as long as we ensure that our costs are covered 100%, there's no hidden costs. But it's a great idea.
The next item on the agenda is a bond for the fiscal office assistant.
Any questions?
And so that's for Patty?
Yes.
And she has to be bonded because she works in the fiscal office, correct?
Yes, and so, and the fiscal office assistants have to be bonded for considerably more than anyone else, $250,000.
That was okay for her to be working up until this point?
Because Congress there.
Any questions?
No.
Motion to authorization of purchase order to Reinhardt, Walter, and Xander Associates of the amount of $1,780 for fiscal office assistant bond.
Second.
Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Ms. Spitzer?
Yes.
Finally, the VSIF of Ohio is insurance policy for firefighters. Any questions?
And what is the FIS?
Ms. Matt? I didn't put this on here.
Something that the townships carry for, for the volunteer firefighters, dates all the way back home to the volunteer department, actually.
When I talked to him earlier today, because he was coming in, he did say it was basically for the volunteer firefighters' insurance.
So it covers them like on the job?
On the job, I think, driving vehicles and those types of things, and liability. We do, in place right now.
What's his part-time firefighter? Is it, is it, does the name of the company belong to the firefighters, but it covers part-time firefighters?
This is specifically for part-time firefighters.
So the name of the company is volunteer. So we've always paid, paid this over here?
Cover the part-time firefighters.
And does it, does the amount depend on how many firefighters we have, or is it, do we have to write them with an updated number? Because recently we'll be.
When I spoke with the chiefs, there wasn't anything about certain numbers or anything like that. It was just a matter of just carrying the insurance to cover. Just having a part-time firefighter as a.
But then we're going to be, you'll be part-time firefighters?
Yes.
Okay, I'm more so, does that affect the coverage or the, or do you, you don't need to know the answer now, or do you just want to make sure?
No, yeah, I can check with him. When I talked to, when I talked to him this afternoon, he said basically, this is a standard, what they do for, just covering part-time firefighters in general. There wasn't any numbers tied to it.
Maybe if you could just check into that, because this is a different kind of new year because, you know, things change with the part-timers working more hours, so who would even think of asking that, really?
I mean, it was on there last year when we were public safety, the liaison. Did you happen to see it at all?
Well, last year though, we had part-time, this year we're making much greater use of our part-time firefighters after the levy fail. So that would be a difference. Plus, we might be, they'll be working a lot more hours now, so there might be a difference if they're working more hours.
No. Are, are we okay with this resolution?
I understand.
Yeah, if you could be checking, then let me know. That would be.
Just didn't know if you had come across it as public safety, because when we had it in front of the board last year.
Okay, a year ago.
I think, motion authorization of purchase order to VSIF of Ohio of the amount of $3,569 for insurance policy for part-time firefighters.
Second.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Ms. Taranto?
Yes.
Anything else in the fiscal office?
Liquor permits?
Oh, liquor permit, for a second. You did have a liquor permit?
Liquor permits for Clover Enterprises, doing business as Nellie's. Looks like it's a transfer from Claire Street Gattern. And they're both, both applications are for the same business, but for two different types of permits. One's for D3A, the other one's for D1, D2, D3, D4. And we're still under our quota. And it's just a matter of the board, under consensus, would like to object. And it's just a matter of, the board, under consensus, would like to object for, would request a hearing regarding the liquor permit.
Is the board requesting a hearing, do you review it?
Where is this at, what?
Drug Mart.
Drug Mart Shoppings.
Copy Center.
I think it's, uh, what's it, the Great Tavern, wasn't it?
It was the Great Tavern, yeah.
Greed Street Tavern?
Yeah, something like that.
Is requesting, um, since we're just...
It looks like somebody may have acquired a business, and they're asking the liquor commission to transfer the liquor permit at the existing business.
I did know this was for sale, so, it probably wasn't one of them.
It was, okay. Okay, now, I do not request the, uh, the hearing.
I'm sorry?
I don't require, I would not.
So, is it consensus that we accept it without a hearing?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like the fiscal office. Uh, moving on to old business. We have a zoning application that we, uh, for Sanctuary of Enclave of the Lakes, and then Ms. McCarthy passed out the final, um, resolution for the application. Did the board get a chance to review it?
Yes, yeah.
Is there any objections or changes that you have to...
No, no.
Uh, would that like to move, move to the adoption of the following resolution? On October seventeen, two thousand twelve, the board of township trustees approved the creation of Sanctuary of the Lakes and Enclave of the Lakes Symphony Plan and Residential District, Sanctuary SF PRD, provides approval of the application, development plan, and zoning application number one-two-zero-two-two-three, which development plan consisted of development plan text, exhibits, and related materials, and whereas such approval became final on November sixteen, two thousand twelve. And whereas virtue of such approval of zoning app was amended and pursuant to section one-zero-point-zero-six E of the Orange Township zoning resolution, the approved development plan amended the zoning resolution as it applies to property subject to approval. And whereas MI Homes of Central Ohio has requested that the Orange Township Board of Township Trustees administratively approve certain changes to the previously approved application, development plan, Sanctuary SF PRD, and has submitted to the board the final amended development plan consisting of materials stated in the listed documents that attached here unto, in attachment A, and detailing and depicting the requested changes for that area. Such dismissal being in the binder label and stamp received by Orange Township Zoning on February fourteen, two thousand thirteen, specifically stamped received by Orange Township Zoning above on February fourteen, two thousand thirteen, superimposed over received. And whereas section one-zero-point-zero-six E of the Orange Township Zoning Resolution provides that changes to an approved development plan should only be made in board finding's purpose and necessity for changes, evidence, and reasonable effort towards accomplishment of the original development plan. The proposed changes are not in conflict with the general health, welfare, and safety of the public or development standards of the district. And where the public hearing has been held by the board upon request and exhibits, testimony, and other evidence presented, review, to determine the applicant has satisfied burden as the foregoing criteria by the great weight of the evidence. Therefore, be resolved that the board finds valid purpose and necessity to insist on the request changes to the approved application, development plan, Sanctuary SF PRD, and if applicant has met burden in that regard. Be further resolved upon review, board finds evidence and reasonable effort towards accomplishment of the original development plan. The applicant has met burden in that regard. Be further resolved upon such review, board finds requested changes are not in conflict with general health, welfare, or safety of the public, and the applicant has met burden in that regard. Be further resolved upon such review, board finds requested changes are not in conflict with development standards in Sanctuary SF PRD, but rather complementary to such changes, if the applicant has met burden in that regard. Be further resolved that proposed changes to the approved application, development plan, reflected in the final amended development plan, submitted by MI Homes of Central Ohio, and detailing and depicting changes requested by it are approved by the board. Be further resolved that the final amended development plan referenced above consists of those materials. Itemized in listing, listing the documents attached here to and attached A, if such material are fully incorporated by reference in the resolution, as a full repeat herein. Be further resolved that the foregoing findings and decision are made upon the basis of those findings in fact, respectively indicated in attachment B, attached here to and fully incorporated by reference in this resolution, as full repeat herein. Be further resolved that those materials listed in attachment A, as exhibit A, sheet, one, sheet half, exhibit A, sheet, I'm sorry, one-two, exhibit A, sheet two-two, exhibit B, sheet one-three, exhibit B, sheet two-three, and exhibit I, in the above referenced material, attachment A, shall replace exhibit A, sheet one-two, exhibit A, sheet two-two, exhibit B, sheet one-three, exhibit B, sheet two-three, and exhibit I, of the application, development plan approved in two thousand twelve, and those above described materials listed in attached A, as redline copy of proposed development plan text, redline copy of proposed development table, table one, and the redline copy of proposed development table, table two, shall replace development, development data, table one, and development data, table two, of the application, development plan approved in two thousand twelve. Be further resolved that foregoing constitutes a change approved by the board to the previously approved application, development plan, Sanctuary SF PRD, and while portion of the previously approved application, development plan, not changed herein, shall continue in full course and effect.
Second?
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Renter?
Yes.
Ms. Snapp? Okay, Ms. Renter?
Can we briefly brief, uh, break, or do you have some...
We just, yeah, we have some people here, so, um, before we finish up with the old business, which is item B, office assistant discussion, um, at those tables. Um, I will say that I thought about this, and my recommendation at this time is, is that we need to, uh, sort of retract. I don't think we should backfill a position. I think it's time we should take those duties and distribute them through other employees, with some of it has been already discussed briefly. Uh, and again, this is, is in an effort of a cost-saving measure, that we try to bring in some of those costs. So, that's my recommendation, that we go back to that position.
So, you said, uh, it's been discussed, the position, and, um, redistributing some of the, uh, job duties, when was that discussed?
I, I had conversations to find out if it was possible with Ms. Mesmer, doing my investigation to see if that's a possibility, and we've seen if employees had ideas, and if that's the case, what, what kind of options or ideas that they might have that would help make that happen. So, yeah, there was some discussions last week, going through, seeing if there was ways to go ahead and pull this on, and also approach the fiscal office to see if there's anything there that they can help with as well, all in the effort to find out if there's ways to, uh, excuse me, distribute, distribute that workload across without having to backfill that position.
So, had decisions been made as to how those duties are going to be distributed, redistributed?
I think there's been some, 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 yeah, from Ms. Mesmer was putting together some ideas, uh, in her, in her capacity, trying to find ways to, uh, at least, at this time period, definitely, because we need somebody to go ahead and start taking on responsibilities. For the fact that we know that she is leaving, just in case, um, so...
So, I thought that Patty, when she was hired, and that, that she was gonna be assisting with that, is that still possible to you?
Through numerous discussions with Ms. Mesmer, and with Ms. Lewis, we, I've moved forward with, uh, shorter requirements by asking her, and assertively that she would be handling DCA zoning commission meeting minutes, and that has been agreed. And we've moved forward with that by having her train with Shirley right now, and drafting those minutes, as well as her attending, uh, if not, she hasn't already attended one, maybe both.
So, so, do DCA's any commission minutes? When did that start?
She's coming to meetings Thursday with the zoning commission, and she's coming on the fourteenth to the DCA.
It was initially for, the other one was postponed, right? A week or two ago?
She was in training, that, and not here. But if it were... Whatever someone asked her to last week, she wasn't available, the other backside, if she did.
They were pointing.
So, she'll be able to handle, um, all the duties that were previously handled by Shirley?
No, she'll just do the zoning and DCA minutes.
Okay.
Other employees will handle some of the other duties, right now, Greg will take care of purchasing for the township.
Okay, so, um, now, the, the, is there a reason that the, uh, the fiscal officer minutes aren't being done by a township employee and not a fiscal officer employee?
I'm confused right now.
Oh, Mary Ann works for the trustee, but she's doing the trustee minutes for you?
I think a number of years ago, that duty was delegated, uh, and it's just something that's worked, it's been in place, and now that, uh, in the spirit of cost-saving measure, with not backfilling that position, I felt that, uh, with the heavier load of two meetings, DCA, zoning commission meetings, that, you know, if something isn't broke, something isn't broken, why fix it? Mary Ann does a great job with minutes, and Patty can then step up and learn the ZC and DCA. So, I think that's a matter of fluidity and, and, you know, talk about cost-saving. We would be training two people if we moved Mary Ann off minutes, onto zoning commission DCA, and moved Patty to minutes. But as this was, we're training one.
Is, did, did the board of trustees actually ask Ms. Ross to do the minutes, or is it the fiscal officer?
When Ms. Ross was hired, there was extensive discussion, I think even present at the time, that she was hired for that specific, well, not that specific, that would be one of her functions, and that the fiscal office would delegate, uh, that function to her.
And we'll have to check into this, but I was reading today that there is an attorney general opinion that says, um, that, uh... Can a board of township trustees designate a person to take minutes of board meetings pursuant to Ohio Vice Code five-oh-four-point-oh-nine? The answer in the Ohio Township handbook is that a board of township trustees that has not adopted a limited home rule of government pursuant to chapter five-oh-four of the Ohio Vice Code is not authorized to designate a person to keep its journal and take the minutes of board meetings. So, I wanted us to look into that.
They did not designate, that I did.
That's what my question was.
Right.
But who is that under?
Me.
Thank you. Well, I'm just a little bit disturbed that that, this decision wasn't shared with me, I have no idea about it, and it was discussed without me, and then mysteriously, we decided not to fill that, someone decided not to fill that position, and it wasn't tabled as it was supposed to be, so...
Well, again, as I mentioned earlier on, that, that was an oversight of not being on there, on the agenda, it truly was. Um, in regards to your, um, other point, again, these were discussions we were having to see if it was possible to make sure that, um, we were able to handle it without having to backfill that position, and what could be done?
Well, at the last meeting, Ms. Mesmer was so adamant that we immediately need to publish this, get this person hired, and it was very adamant, we need to do it immediately, and I find it interesting, no one else but me, I guess, remembered that, that this item is tabled, so, I'll just leave it at that, but...
You know, I'm sure you saw this agenda when it came out, and you mentioned that it wasn't on there.
Well, it came out on Friday, so, why would I mention that?
But, in any event, we were just, again, we were just trying to do our diligence to find out if the possibility was there, and our goal is to be around trying to save money. And if we can do that without backfilling that position, I think as well, we should go.
Right, well, I would like to have Ms. Mesmer submit a detailed plan as to how the duties are going to be divided out fairly among the existing employees, because we are requiring them to take on a lot of additional duties, and if that can't be handled, I would suggest that we give it a try, based that we possibly have been hiring a part-time person if we need that. Good, I don't wanna over, burden the employees so, so much that, um, that's too much work for them to do.
At the same time, we gotta be cognizant of the fact that we have a certain amount of money coming in, and we don't wanna be spending more than what we have coming in, and I think part of our goal is to make sure that we're watching that, and I hate to say it, sometimes we have to pick up a few more duties than we'd like to.
Oh, right, I understand that.
And that means that, you know, if we're not backfilling a position, we're also gonna have to tighten down, and, and right now, I'm looking at the numbers, backfilling that position would not be an option for me, because I think we, we strain ourselves.
I think she's also, Ms. Mesmer was in court all last week, so, I don't believe she's gonna have time to really work on this yet.
Right, but there's been discussions that we've had, I've not been privy to those discussions, so, I would appreciate having a plan. Because we discussed last week, or two weeks ago, not having it full-time, maybe going part-time for the same reason, so, I would like to see a plan as to how that, that's going to be accomplished, but...
That's fine. Mr. Chair, I'd just like to celebrate that, that we're being responsible, I just mentioned earlier in the meeting that the zoning department is running eighteen to twenty thousand dollars in the red. Now, we're making a decision not to fill a position, which brings that in the black, so I would just like to celebrate the idea that as a government, many people are accusing government of spending too much money and having too many employees, we're actually choosing to cut back, to not backfill, and to push those duties to other employees. Albeit, I respect the work that everybody does and the workloads that they have, but I think we should celebrate a decision that we're saving on payroll, we're saving on healthcare costs, benefits, and everything else, so, I appreciate what the board has done in this situation, and just want to say thank you.
The board hasn't done anything, yeah, it hasn't been agreed to not do that. But my whole point is, I definitely agree, that would probably actually be part of the cost this way, but you can't just say, oh, we're gonna cut an employee randomly and not fill her without having a, without having a plan, but, so...
Well, as I mentioned, that's what we were doing, we were working on, and be honest with you, from preliminary talks, it's possible. As I mentioned earlier as well, sometimes some of the workload has to be more for you.
Right, and that makes sense, but if I'm not privy, privy to what's going on, no one tells me, I have no way of knowing that.
Ms. Mesmer, could you, I know you were busy for last week.
All right, but just a simple email, obviously, your plan and doing would be appreciated.
I thought it was something that we're all looking at, and making a decision, I, I haven't, I've only started to look into it.
So, moving on, I know we have some residents here, um, regarding a annexed property down in South Old State.
Before we get into this, Mr. Pass, one question about Sanctuary and Enclave.
Sure.
Is there a referendum period on your decision to handle it?
No.
Okay.
Well, there is an appeal period. It's the same difference. If there is no referendum period, this is a administrative decision, twenty-five-oh-six, appeal, thirty days.
But it's an appeal on the changes that we made to not anything else.
It's an appeal on the decision of where it made this evening.
All right, move on to, uh, annexed piece of property in South Old State, which, uh, a bunch of information was dispersed, and it all trust cases, Ms. McCarthy also followed up, uh, in regards to a zoning application going to Columbus, uh, at which they're looking to increase density, I knew it was from, um, I'm trying to think now, it was from nine to...
Fifteen?
Six-point-two, fifteen, or fifteen-nine.
Yes.
And, uh, I, I sat in on HOA, uh, to actually incorporate multiple H O A's by, by time of work, I don't know, to listen to the residents and their feelings about this, and they had some valid concerns of, of having a, a high-density area, in an area that doesn't really support it, uh, from the standpoint of, even though there's gonna be future road improvements, uh, I do believe it's still, uh, looking at the long-term goal of the county of that, uh, north-south connector, uh, still being an area of congestion with, with that high density. Knowing that we have a, a, it was a thousand unit right around the corner going in, apartments, um, and then also the other units that are down by Costco. There seems to be a lot of, of, of high-density apartments moving in. And I understand that a lot of these developers, or their goals are to, uh, make these for young professionals and, um, looking for that higher income, but unfortunately, when you start oversaturating a market like this, you've already seen prices decrease on these, these complexes, and, and, you know, that's already being visible. Uh, the concerns are, they definitely don't wanna have this turning to an area where you have, you know, for example, Morse Road, or, or one-sixty-one, where the property values keep decreasing, uh, so they have a very, they're concerned about this, and, um, I can tell that, you know, they really, there's some very active people, and would like to go forward and, and find a way to, uh, prevent this from happening. I know that's a tough challenge, and Ms. McCarthy will tell you, tell you about that, um, being in Columbus and annexed, but the good news is, uh, we also had a representative from Presser Commons HOA, which is part of Columbus, an annexation, that is opposed to this as well. And, um, and I believe the Florida North Coalition meeting is tomorrow night. Um, they'll be meeting, and my understanding that they're not entirely in favor of this development. So, what I would like to do is, is, as a board, I'm proposing that we pass a resolution, um, dis subjecting to this, this density, this development, to help our residents that are concerned about this, uh, being in a backyard. Did this come forward, state your name?
My name's Kelly Clark, I live at thirteen-thirty-eight Westwood Drive, and I actually wanna speak to your point, Mr. Quigley. I actually attended that same meeting, and just to fill in, I did talk to one of the Delaware County... just to fill you in, I did talk to one of the Delaware County Commissioners today. And he did say that he was going to try and get them to pass a resolution of non-support. So he says it won't do any good, but he said, I said we could try anyway and he said he would. I'm just going to read it right away. I recently became aware of this housing development. You know, there's a lot of community concern. They have not done any traffic impact studies per their attorney that was dispersing this information the other night. I've tried to get some relief. I mean, I've called our state and our federal representatives, federal, they're out of it, they can't help. And I talked with the county commissioner today, you know, and trying to educate myself on this, this issue because we only came out about it about a week ago, maybe two weeks ago. It, you know, it appears Ohio law is of no support for townships. So I think, I, I went around, okay, how are we going to get out of this? How are we going to get out of this aggressive annexation? Because the problem is annexation. It's not the development per se, it's not the apartment complex or the Schottensteins or anybody else. It's the fact that any, that Columbus can come and annex, that's all they want. We don't have any power to stop them. The only two ways I can find to stop it are incorporating ourselves into a village or a city, and I am not an attorney, I don't know how this works, or the development of a joint economic, it's called joint economic development area. So I came tonight to see if there's any way we can see the feasibility of either one of those things. I have no idea the cost involved. I have no, I don't know what it will take, but I know I'm not alone. I, I mean, there were a lot of very upset people. And a lot of those people are going to go to that meeting the other night. But that's still just a, a coalition of homeowners association that doesn't have any legal authority. So, I, I mean, if we want to protect our borders, if we want to keep Orange Township the place that I chose to move and build my home and raise my family, as all of us here did, I think we need to look at our future and how we want that to go. There's enough people here now. It's not like a one-room school house anymore. I think we need to look at the feasibility of both those options.
And Kelly, to your point that you had made earlier with me, is all the additional students of those apartments were brown?
Well, according to him, it was fifteen. He said it would only be fifteen. I said there's going to be two hundred and twenty-five apartments. You're telling me it'll be fifteen students? And then one of the other people asked him, you know, can you even get a bus in and out? They're proposed, the road that they're proposing, it doesn't make any sense, but.
Who is him that you said?
It was the attorney for the Schottenstein.
Okay.
The, I mean, he came and put his, you know, his picture.
Was that Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Jeff Brown was his name. Yeah. They had the architect was there as well. I can't remember the architect's name, but.
What's going to be the rental rate of the apartments? Did anyone?
Well, he said fifteen hundred dollars. He said there was going to be one, two and three-bedroom apartments. There wasn't going to be, there wasn't going to be very many three. There was like fifteen or twenty. And then the rest of it was pretty evenly split between one and two-bedroom apartments. There was only going to be one road in and out, and that road dumps directly out onto South Old State. No other way in or out. It's not going to hook into the, the retreat, the condos that are just immediately north of that. So they're going to be dumping up to four hundred and forty cars on South Old State twice a day. And now those road improvements aren't slated to, to occur until long after those apartments are built and those kids are already in our schools.
And there, there is, there is a third option now, but it would entail some, one of our legislators to actually.
I try, I'm trying that one.
Make a deal.
They don't.
Mike and I, Mike and I have talked about it ourselves.
Yeah, I have not heard back from Representative Brenner yet. Representative Teaberry called me and he just said, not my fault, ballgame. I'm like, yeah, thanks anyway. But, I mean, we're not going to get the legislation passed, certainly in my lifetime. They can't even pass a budget. But, you know, the quickest way for us to preserve ourselves is to take our adaction.
From, from our standpoint, incorporated and also we got to keep in mind, because I have a lot of challenges.
I know. And I don't know what they all are.
It, it could be costly. And that's another thing that I think we kicked around for some time now, Mike.
Yeah, yes. Since, since, um, eighteen ninety. Yes, yes. And private boards have always reached the same conclusion, but doesn't mean this board is certainly bound by that. The reason Mr. Teaberry indicated when he said annexation is a state law issue, it's not a federal issue. The state law was, was recently modified, it was about two thousand and one. And you can bait, some things were good about it, probably from the township standpoint, some things weren't. As Mr. Quigley indicated, incorporating that is, that is also a matter of state law, that is a statutory procedure. It has a number of prerequisites that have to be met, I haven't proven for twenty years.
It's right here.
But as I recall, it used to be that you had to have a minimum population of twenty-five thousand, you had to have a certain population per square mile, you had to have a certain tax valuation per square mile. There was a process you went through and if I remember correctly, I believe it involved a vote, simply because, well, there were two ways you could do it. One was you, it's been a long time, I don't remember, I didn't like it. You could either have a vote or you could get a consent from every municipal corporation you were within. I believe it was three miles up and I wouldn't hold my breath on getting one for as much as I saw. So there are, there are some challenges just structurally to the concept. As far as the result, there are other challenges that have to be considered as well.
Right.
And those could be very costly. We would be assuming a number of costs that right now we just don't have. We're not responsible.
Are you talking about incorporating?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what was the other option?
Well, I think incorporating is.
Well, you have legislator, you have.
Well, I have a little.
Attorney, Attorney.
Joint economic development.
Joint economic development zone, yes. But since it's town, that's not township property, we shouldn't enter into agreement.
Well, I think you're looking from a future standpoint, trying to prevent it from having.
He said that's the way to add the buffer between your border and Columbus.
You probably, and this is just off the top of my head, but you probably have other concerns in that there is an agreement between Delaware County and the city of Columbus on sewer. You know, the, that, the impacts of that could be very difficult for the township.
I think I know it's Columbus sewer, but Delaware treats it.
Well, it's essentially, the, the agreement is that in that twelve hundred and six acre area, the sewer is collected and, and, actually, I think you're right, I think it's collected by Columbus, is pumped to Delaware, there's a meter, flow meter.
Yep.
And then they charge, it's charged back and surcharged to cover the expense of that. So, yeah, that, that's in there as well. But there are a number of things that I'm afraid, they'd all have to be weighed, but it's not, it's not a simple black and white decision on any level you want to look at this.
I certainly appreciate that.
One issue I think that would probably be relevant and that would be just how many more properties do you have that are going to be subject to this? And again, that involves some information that really I don't have right now.
But a jet is only valid for commercial properties.
I believe you're right, yeah.
So it would only, it couldn't, it can't work if there's any residential properties. It's only for either a property that's vacant. It could be zone residential, but intended to be commercial, but it has to be vacant. It can't have any, any homes on it. So that kind of zone would only be valid for commercial properties.
Right. I, I, I understand, I understand that. But I do think it's time to think about having a conversation again. There's a lot more people here now than there were. And I bet if you, it said you needed fifty-one percent, I bet if you took a, I think we'd probably beat that fifty-one percent.
Because I, I think one part of it is that there needs to be, maybe a little more compromised by our zoning commission. And that's not, to me, I mean, they've been doing for years.
It's not zoning anymore, it's Columbus. We have nothing to say about it.
Well, but.
The thing that Bisnak was referring to was an outreach effort by the board to have given developer although nameless, where the public actually appeared advocating in stride in opposition to the application.
Right.
The applicant withdrew the application. This was after quite a bit of effort by the board to contact the developer's representative. They actually pulled their annexation petition.
Rachel, about Scott Walker?
No.
Olympus?
No. No, that, that would, no.
But then it went through and it approved their much higher.
Well, basically it went through. I don't know that it was really going to affect the density per se, but certainly certain characteristics and attributes of that property would have been different.
Right.
We'd already had some preliminary discussion prior to their withdrawing anything, you can imagine. I think that would have happened. It also would have maintained the property completely in the township, which would have prevented this leapfrogging or springboarding past it. But the public showed up en masse and they did not want to see that request considered by this board. They said, let it go ahead, but don't do it. So, I mean, as long as the, the people or the folks are conflicted, you're going to be in quite a situation.
What happened was there, there was a piece of property that was going to annex and they were asking, it was, it wasn't residential now that I think about it, but it's happened with residential before with the same, this condo is down at South Old State in Powell Road.
Which is the other part of this land, the other parcel of this land we're talking about?
They actually annexed that, they were not going to annex it. They went through the zoning, through the township years ago. And they got approved. And there was some compromise, but not much by the Orange zoning commission. So when the time, when the opportunity came to annex to get more houses, I mean, why wouldn't they? There wasn't enough benefit for the developer to stay. So as each property continues to annex farther north, subsequent, it will just keep going farther up. So.
Exactly.
My point is, if, if, if we can be a little bit more flexible at our borders and allow greater density or allow, even though we compromise our principles.
I think, I think this board faces the same challenge that prior boards have faced. Actually, the, I can't remember the name of it. It's a Columbus development on twenty-three below Resor-, below Resurrection Cemetery. The township was approached.
Can't you imagine?
And it was indicated that if the town, if, speaking, I mean, there were, it was quite a discussion in there. But that if the township were to adopt the Columbus development standards, which as to this property are apparently fifteen point six dwelling units per acre, that's twice anything the township has right now. And to this point, the boards of trustees have looked at those choices and said no. Because if, if it does go forward under that, you know, the township's going to be expected to, you know, more or less be responsible for it. And, you know, you mentioned Presser Commons, if I remember correctly, I think the same situation was present there. They were told if you adopt the Columbus standards that we will not annex. And the board trustees likewise said no.
Right. But if you can stop it, if you can stop it at one point, you can't do anything. If you can stop one property from annexing, you can stop everything adjacent to it from annexing.
Yes.
Because it has to be contiguous to Columbus. So if you let this happen, it's going to go north.
Well, it's going to go so far north and I guess it'd be the question, well, that's the question, I think. The, to date, Delaware County has refused to extend service to annexed municipal areas. And that line stops at Powell Road. Now, that's, that's been the policy in the county for quite a while. But again, each day goes on to new morning. To your point, there were compromises made. They were not on that kind of a scale. Your maximum, as you probably remember, is four units per acre, four units per acre for one family. Going from four to fifteen would be quite a jump. And also, once you make that jump, the question becomes how do you say no else would?
Well, you'd set a precedent, but hopefully, if, I, I thought if you would set a precedent, if, if at a certain criteria, you could set a precedent. So just to stop, it compromises your principles on a few properties, so it doesn't keep moving, moving north.
Well, what, what board was able to do in a number of areas, I mean, pretty much the entire southern line, they didn't go to Dean, let's say, but they went to Southern. And the developer was trying to work on that basis. Now, whether that would occur in these cases, we didn't get a chance to find out. I, I do believe on the one instance I was speaking of earlier, that developer was not going to modify that request. That was for actually what is known as a residential hotel within the revised code. So it really wasn't a building, although it might be kind of hard to tell inside.
In that case, the residents came to the zoning commission and were so upset about it. The zoning commission was a negative and then they withdrew. And then they're going to go ahead and build it anyway?
Well, and these residents have gone.
With much worse standards, like there's not as many buffering standards and other things.
And the materials, materials.
So, now they're going to have a building that could have looked a lot nicer and had other amenities if we had compromised. And now they're just going to go ahead and build it in Columbus. So that was because residents came and were upset and the zoning commission turned it, turned it down.
Do you think we've compromised a lot of Orange Township? We've compromised a lot of Orange Township. I didn't move to the city of Columbus. I moved to Orange Township. I chose to build my house here, volunteer in the schools here, vote for the people here, raise my family here. I didn't vote for any of that to be happening in the city of Columbus.
All right. Well, if we compromise on those areas.
So if you let this happen, it's, you're in the city of Columbus. If, if we let this happen, and I don't live, I mean, I live north of Powell Road, but all it has to do is be connected. If it's continuous in any way, they're just going to say, too bad.
Right. And that's why, I don't, I know there's, there's nothing we can do about it here, but like you were saying, put other, try to put other areas into the, the jet C or, or compromise on other areas. I mean, too kind, kind of too late most likely for this, but.
Well, three entities are going to voice their disapproval. So not just people, but at any rate, I do think it's time that we look at how to protect ourselves because it's not going to stop. And our schools can't take anymore. And South Old State can't take anymore. Let alone just that one little thing is going to be a problem. But it's going on all over the district. So I'd like to see some resources put towards identifying if that's even feasible, either one of those ways are feasible. I don't know. I don't know how much it would cost or what. I mean, I don't want to be a burden.
Identify, which ways, which were the two?
I could only find two.
Incorporating.
The corp, incorporating or the joint.
You can't do the joint. That is just residential. You couldn't put the residential property.
Columbus isn't all residential, is it?
No, a jet C is only valid for commercial property, not for residential.
These still have twenty-three, still have business owners under, that could be part of that, that could be.
Oh, yeah, other parts, but for this property, this can be part of it.
I was like, there's, there's not, you need to do that to build a buffer, is my only point.
Right, right.
So that they can't come across the line.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, looking to the future for all the other property. For, for this one, we can't have a jet C on this one, but, but it's a good point. We can try it on other things. Then to incorporate, to become a city.
Maybe we go back and, Mike, we can go back and look at that again.
It can't be done yet. The last census was showing we're doing twenty-five thousand.
Well, of course, it seems like, the thing that, once you get to be a city, there's so many more, a lot of tight controls. You have income tax, things are a lot more strict.
You're going to have income tax, you're going to assume responsibility for all the roads. You're going to have to hire an engineer. You're going to probably.
Have to have a full-time attorney?
Yeah. Full-time, with the staff, by the way, with the staff.
Right.
But.
And a lot of people move to townships.
There are a number of things that.
The townships are a little bit more flexible and a little bit more comfy, I guess. They're not quite as, as complicated as, as cities, but.
Until they have a hostile takeover. Okay, thank you.
You know, we can, we can take a look at it and see.
Well, if it's going to waste your time, I just think, you know, the county commissioners is like, well, you're not going to change anything.
Right.
I said, well, that's kind of disappointing that an elected person says just.
Are you looking to the, what is it they call it?
The meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, uh, the fourteenth. No, there's a meeting at the, I think it was on March fourteenth, Development Commission of the city of Columbus.
No, I don't know about that one yet.
I would, I'd be happy to share some information with you, but I, that's, the action, as I'm understanding Columbus's process, which tracks on most municipal corporations, they have what is called Planning Commissioner. In their particular instance, they're calling it a Development Commission. But it performs basically the same sub-function as our zoning commission, which is they put together and kind of sort and sift out the application. They then make a recommendation that goes to council, the city council, the city of Columbus. So, you know, as far as opposition groups meeting themselves, that's certainly, you know, legal. But the real opposition, I would respectfully suggest, would be to appear at the Development Commission and ready to go. And, and having a presentation that, you know, is ordered, ordered, structured and factual, not, not, and I hate to say this, well, actually, it's a zoning decision. I guess you can get emotional with people. But it, it certainly, I think, is important to bring facts as well. And if you look at the evaluation of the city staff, they highlighted that this does not conform to the far and one plan. They indicated that they felt the density proposed was excessive. Those are all facts that can be recounted at length by everybody. They also mentioned that the highest surrounding density, which is actually in the city of Columbus, is right now at six point two units per acre. And as I said before, they're proposing fifteen point six. That gets to be a question of compatibility of that use. You know, folks, those folks in the, you know, they look north and saw your neighborhood and, you know, didn't anticipate that they'd be facing. uh, you know, and didn't anticipate that they'd be facing an adjacent use of this sort. So, I mean, it is a political process. It's gonna involve people being out there. Uh, if the groups have the ability, it would probably be a good idea to maybe talk to the board about it. Um, and, and try to maximize this legislative process. Because they are asking for a zone change from the material I saw.
Right there. I have, so many, I have it at home, but-
Yeah, but there, there is quite a bit to this stuff, uh, keep it simple, I guess. But at the same time, if, if you've, uh, you know, watched the operation of the trustees or the zoning commission, you know, on a legislative act, it can make a great deal of difference, uh, when, when people show up. Certainly, that example, we quoted down on Powell Road. If the public had not been there, that application probably would have gone forward, I suspect. It, it would have been modified, but it would have gone forward. Public showed up, it had an impact. I don't say, I would not presume to say the city of Columbus is necessarily totally different from that.
All right, so will you give me that information for that meeting?
I'll be happy to meet with you as soon as we finish.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And meantime, though, I do wanna, as I mentioned, I do wanna provide a resolution for this. Willing to do so, to move forward, and, uh, and, uh, approving of this development. And I believe that resolution is passed. I'll be trusting you. Is there any questions regarding?
Um, I would like to say upfront, I do completely support this resolution. My only concern is that this resolution is basically, it, it's somewhat, um, it's somewhat, it, it's not gonna do a lot of good if a township opposes this, so. I'm concerned that this would set a precedent for us objecting on various different circumstances in the future. Um, because we really have no control over this area. I mean, it would be kinda similar to, uh, passing a resolution. Well, there's all different kinds of situations you could pass a resolution for that don't, uh, and you could pass a resolution to ODOT that you didn't like, and other signs, or things like that, but, I mean, how many hours did it take to prepare this resolution?
Um, I think we, we have an express amount of residents here that are concerned about this development, and I'm just trying to say, as, as, as a trustee, we're supporting our residents, that this is not a development that we, we are accepting.
Well, and I agree with that. I'm just concerned that if, uh, that, I mean, how many, how many hours did it take you to-
Honestly, could, to tell you off the top of my head, Lisa, but I can tell you this. Uh, it was necessary to assemble the applications, materials, to even know what we were talking about. Uh, I also visited the, uh, Greek Homeowners Association website, and saw what they had. I located the Far North Coalition, saw what they had, went to the city of Columbus zoning site. I got the information off of there, and, uh, also some general information regarding the city of Columbus and its operations. Having said that, uh, I sat down and drafted this with the express goal of keeping it to one page, because I personally think on a document of those sorts, you said it's basically a political document. Uh, you make it two pages, and then sometimes I get the sense people might not-
Sounds like so many of our residents-
Now, there were things involved-
But you think this will have any, will this have any impact on, on with the-
I, I don't know. I think there are-
When you add it to the county commissioners, and you add it to the far north county, these are a lot of people that live here, and part of the job of being trustees to represent us, not worry about how much.
There are residents, you know, no, I'm getting paid, that's the whole discussion.
Yeah, but the city of, we're, we're, I, I, a lot of times, I mean, townships are pretty good about listening to adjacent partners, but what I found, I've been doing zoning since nineteen ninety-eight, and frequently, the city of Columbus doesn't care at all about any, anybody that's adjacent.
I think in this case, they might, because those residents of the condominium, I mean, you don't know. Okay, I don't have to just follow any more names, but I, I think there are certain characteristics of this that if this doesn't get a, a, a fair scrutiny-
Might influence them.
You know, I'm just sleeping in this time, I guess, but, um, you have residents of Columbus who are opposed to this. They live in that development immediately to the north. They are taxpayers in Columbus. They are residents of the city. And yes, I'm thinking back to the infamous words of one council of the city of Columbus myself. But here you have residents of Columbus who are opposed to it. You have adjoining residents who are opposed to it. Um, you've got-
And doesn't meet that plan, that far northern plan?
Yeah, it does not meet the ninety-four Far North Plan, which, by the way, I also looked at. Um, and it does, even their own staff is, is called a number of these things into question. So again, I would say, you know, if, if, if it's, if the opposition groups are meeting this week, whatever, great. But I think it's probably, most likely gonna have a greater impact if you all get in a car or a bus and go on down to this area that is standing right now. And as I said, I'll dig out that notice, and, and you can see when and where. I would almost, I would assume that the Far North Coalition should be aware of it. It's, it's posted on the Columbus zoning-
Yeah, I know they're aware, but we just-
But again, they advise-
Tomorrow, that's the next hurdle, so.
Yeah, if, if one person shows up waiting for resolutions, I would say that the-
It's better than leaving one?
Absolutely, and, and to the point-
Well, I'd not send one person, that's my point.
No, we won't. There won't be one person. There'll be one person.
Yeah, I think that if there is a, if you're, uh, you know, we've, we've certainly had a number of meetings, and trustees probably tell you, I mean, deep-lid attendance, you know. Uh, same with zoning, uh, possibly even worse. Zoning does need to be canceled, so.
But Mike, did, have we ever passed a resolution like this before?
I would say what you've done, I, I was trying to think of that when you brought it up. Uh, I-
I can't, I can't recall.
I can't honestly remember if we got into it on the player's computer or not. I do know that the board passed a resolution of support to the commissioners regarding the tornado sirens. Uh, we've had certain scattered resolutions. It has not been a routine practice.
Right, so they run across, uh-
We've had, probably with some space regularity, I would say we haven't averaged one.
Yeah, I think it's been every couple of years, so it is-
Yeah, probably every couple of years.
I just wanna make sure that we're, if we're gonna be doing something, it is that it doesn't become an extremely common occurrence, and that we're, we're careful that, to, to pass ones that we think will really have an impact. And it looks like this, this one would have more impact than, than somewhere, so.
Well, as a taxpayer, I'm glad, because it's trustees did draft it, because if I'm gonna go out and fight for my township, I would really like to have, know that there's some common sense behind it.
Right, we're not allowed to discuss things in private, so we have to discuss it, I mean, so, but we're doing-
Any questions regarding the resolution?
Nope.
Any other comments? I can move to the adoption of the following resolution. Whereas Columbus zoning application number Z one-two dash zero six five has been filled by Walker Land Limited. The County City Real Estate Group requests a zoning change from PUD eight, Land Unit Development District to L A R L D, Limited Department Residential District, for a plus minus fourteen point four acre partial land to permit the construction of two hundred and twenty-four apartments and utilization of a full access entry to the development onto South Old State Road. And whereas South Old State Road designated a minor arterial, oh, excuse me, arterial, in the two thousand and one Delaware County, the rural plan is serving as a principal north-south traffic route in the, in the area. It's currently experiencing serious traffic problems in the area of rezoning, of this rezoning, and is being studied for improvement. And whereas this application is not conforming to the Far North Plan, the city of Columbus has recognized the planned evaluation of this Columbus Department Building and Zoning Services, and is not compatible with the use of, and density of neighboring residential properties, both within and without the Orange Township. And whereas numerous residents and neighbors of Orange Township express concern regarding this application, now therefore be resolved at the Board of Township Trustees of Orange Township, Delaware County, Ohio, expressing its opposition to Columbus zoning application number Z one-two dash zero six five. And urges the Development Commission and City Council of the city of Columbus to deny the same as the present form. Be further resolved at the opposition based upon the high volume of additional traffic, traffic that will be generated by the high density, fifteen point six development, which is a corresponding impact that will have upon safety of public welfare, and the incompatible nature of the high-density apartment complex that reduces the density of neighboring residential properties, six point two maximum for the planned evaluation, both within the Orange Township. Be further resolved at a township's certified copy of this resolution to the Development Commission and Council of the city of Columbus.
Second?
Mr. Piggly, yes?
Toronto?
Yes.
Who's that?
Um, at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess.